This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we'll start the meeting. We'll start it off with our guest. I guess. Tom, Vance, did you have something?
Yes, thank you very much. When the Heritage and Cultural Resolution was passed, one of the requirements was that on an annual basis, we report to council on the activities occurred in the prior year. So that's one of the reasons I requested time this evening. So I'm just going to give you a very high level summary of what the Heritage and Cultural Committee accomplished in 2020. We had four meetings, we had intended to have six, but several were canceled as a result of COVID. We had a successful open house in January of 2020. We received multiple donations throughout 2020, which included items such as items associated with the 1951 100th anniversary of Burnsville Borough, Fire Company related memorabilia, Westernburg's Wire Company manufacturing related memorabilia, the 1976 Bicentennial Parade, American Legion Post 732 memorabilia, and items related to Paul Burke Art, who was a former teacher in town. We provided correspondence to multiple parties who inquired about the history of Burnsville or relatives that may have lived in Burnsville. We wrote a historical article or two for the Burnsville Newsletter. With the assistance of Danny and Luke Schultz, we did some repair work on the Stanton Clay Brick Structure. We have ongoing projects related to organization of the historical files, inventorying of items, and digitalizing photos from slides that are primarily spent from Watts's slides. And we've initiated efforts to capture video segments on historical buildings and other facilities within the town. Unfortunately, COVID put a little bit of dent on all of this, but those were the primary highlights of the 2020 year. Then in addition to that, the resolution also states that we can spend up to $500 without council's approval. All the funding in the Heritage and Cultural Committee has been raised through fundraising activities. There are no borough funds whatsoever in that specific account. So when the resolution was passed, it essentially said if you're going to spend $500 or more, you need to go before council and get their approval, even though the funds are not put in there by council. So what we would like to do is buy a far, buy an additional fireproof cabinet. Since we've collected a few items, then we'd like to put them in a fireproof container. Working with Brenda, Office Depot or Office Max provides us with a discount, but the fireproof cabinets are relatively expensive. So they're probably somewhere between $2,000 to $2,500 without the discount. We did receive a discount price on an item that just so happens was discontinued in the middle of February. That specific fireproof cabinet was discounted about $400 or $500, slightly less than $2,000 it would cost us. So essentially, what I'm requesting is for council to basically give the approval to go buy a fireproof cabinet. And we will work through Brenda and take advantage of the borough discount that we have through either Office Max or Office Depot. So as I said, essentially need council's approval to do that since the anticipated expense is over $500.
Do we actually need a motion or just the consensus? Well, is everybody all right with that?
Yeah, I don't see any issue.
I'm good with it.
Yes.
And hopefully, when they deliver it, they may take it to the second floor. If they don't take it to the second floor, we may need some assistance on getting that up there. But thank you for the approval, and that's all I have. If no other questions, I'll leave the meeting.
Thank you for everything.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right, we'll go to the mayor, please, or we'll go first?
I'll try to stay brief tonight. Wanted to touch bases on the snow removal. Thank you to Chief Thumb and to Mark Snyder for taking care of that nightmare. There were some issues. I had the state police at my house at 2:00 AM because of a resident being agitated with the snow removal in the evening. There were also some concerns with the snow removal process and how do we prioritize between the streets, the borough, the water, the sewer, and so on and so forth. So I would ask that council consider reviewing the bid spec sheet for this year's bid for clarification of that. There was a possibility of someone attempting to enter the police station through a locked door. Unfortunately, the camera systems were not working at the time, so Brenda and Danny were kind enough to go out and purchase new cameras. Thanks to Nick, we were able to get the majority of the cameras installed on Monday, but we need to pick up the cables and the monitors for viewing it. We were contacted by Amelia, Amelia Folk, a Girl Scout interested in doing her scout project with the borough. She is coordinating that with Burnsville Beautification Committee. Kelly from St. Thomas asked for me to invite council and members of the community to an April 10th meeting at St. Thomas from 11:00 to 1:00 PM. There will be a presenter there to discuss human trafficking and how that impacts us. And then I believe finally, next to finally, Memorial Day Parade. I wanted to solicit some input on how we believe the parade could be handled this year. I have spoken to Milford regarding this. I'll be quite candid, I have great concerns with having a large scale parade coming down Main Street. So what I presented as an alternative to that is I would reach out to the military and coordinate what I thought would be one soldier in their dress uniforms with the American flag and some sort of musical instrument to accompany them, whether it's a bagpipe player or a brass instrument, and have them parading down through four different streets of the borough. So just kind of wanted to open that up and ask for some feedback on how we think the parade should be handled this year.
I think that's a fantastic idea. I think it still serves the purpose and is probably a good compromise for all the different people who believe there should be a parade, shouldn't be a parade. At the end of the day, you're still doing something for that day and for the cause. So I love it. I think it's a fantastic idea. Have you had any interest or do you know who you're reaching out to?
I have all of the recruiting centers that would service Berks County. But I wanted to solicit kind of some input from council before I went ahead and began booking it and booking the instruments to go along with it.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with it. I think it sounds good.
I'm also going to send out an advertisement then telling people about the Memorial Day Parade of how we'll be doing it this year, asking for them to decorate their homes and soliciting donations for the flags on Main Street. Okay, I think, oh, street cleaning. I also wanted to ask, did we want to coordinate the rest of the crack ceiling with street cleaning being done in the spring to try to? We already have the cars off the streets and that'll probably be the cleanest that the streets will be all year.
Yeah, I think it's definitely something we can look into. I'll look into it.
Okay.
To find out when they're gonna actually do it. Hopefully, I'll get a long line and swap the check with them.
Okay. I think that's it for me then.
Okay, thanks, y'all.
Um, so the police report, I sent a copy to Sean via email and I placed copies in everybody's bins so that you can get a printed copy for yourself at the office. We had 39 calls for the month of February. Fifteen of them were medical calls. We're seeing a lot more, the medical alerts and people down are, the older folks in the community are requiring more assistance. I don't know how else to say that. We conducted six traffic stops. We dealt with the snowstorm. Relative to the snowstorm, we towed three vehicles off the emergency snow route. We issued eight parking tickets for snow emergencies. About half of them have been paid. The other half were sent to the courts for additional fines and state levies to be applied to those. I think that's, that's the bulk of the report. In regards to calls during times of service, we had 19 calls for service from 7:00 AM till 3:00 PM. We had 15 calls for service from 3:00 to 11:00 and only five calls for the hours of 11:00 till 7:00 AM. And I can tell you that most of the five calls between the hours of 11:00 and 7:00 were medic alerts or people following. Yes, sir.
Now, if I may, I do want to very publicly acknowledge that during each of the snowstorms, the properties that were in foreclosure by the banks, Chief Thumb was out shoveling the snow on those sidewalks. And I asked him, why is he doing it? And his response was, this is my community and the safety of the people matter. So I do want to thank him for that, but I would also ask council, can we automatically get in the habit of citing these properties that just basically are blight properties owned by the banks? You know, whether it's with snow removal, whether it's the grass not being maintained, how do we go about kind of making that on automatic pilot?
I know we did in the past with the, not the snow, but the grass and stuff. I don't know how to understand how we go about the snow part. I guess the same way. You'd have to.
Hire someone to do it and then building against the property.
Okay.
So I did want to just mention, now that that's put publicly that I did that. I wasn't only looking to get the sidewalk safe for the people. The last snow, though, we did cite the property owner because it's still in the, an individual's name on the tax records. So I cited that person and then cleared the sidewalk. So we did take action on one. Ones that are in the bank's name, it's kind of hard to go after them on the ordinance. Most of the time, they don't respond at all because you're, you're listing a bank name. You don't, you have to find out who's directly responsible for that property to try and cite them. But if we can do something where we can put a lien on the property, I'm certainly open to that. It's not a very difficult process. I take pictures of it. It's all timestamped. And then we can move on from there on it. I can just coordinate with Brenda when, when a sidewalk's not cleared. And if it's, there's only two locations that we're talking about. They're both on Main Street. One is in foreclosure, but it has not gone to the bank yet, and one has gone to the bank. So hopefully that clears up anything for anybody that has any questions about it.
Okay. Do you have anything else or?
Um, not unless somebody has a question for me.
I said something to Brenda, I guess she spoke to Sean and you're aware too, is we want, I'd like to see us get a gun safe that locks.
Yeah. So I was out, I did look at one. There's actually one, it's on sale right now at Tractor Supply for $100. It's a 10-gun safe for $100. It's not real. It's not, you know, the top of the line. It's not fireproof, but it's a place to secure our weapons more appropriately. And I was intending on picking that up this week. As long as the weather holds out. It's not heavy. I can do it myself, pick it up, and then it's bolted in to a location inside the office. Does that sound acceptable to everybody?
As long as it fits your needs.
Yeah, they're currently locked in a locker with a padlock on them, so that they are secure. They're not just floating around because I have been very concerned about that. So they're, they're a little bit more secure, but I'd like to do just a step better.
Right. We'll have to remove that old one.
Yeah, I mean, it's a paperweight right now, that one, because they drilled it out. It's not lockable.
Is everybody all right with purchasing that?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Okay.
And to address any questions about the truck, the truck is tentatively scheduled to go in for its striping package. I presented it to Sean. I showed him photographs of what they, what they intend on doing. And the pricing is, I think, $1,250. And that's it. Horse signs in Myerstown. The other place that I had requested a bid for and described everything we wanted, went over everything, they knew what they were bidding on, and they never bid it. They didn't send us any kind of quote.
Was that included in the price that we did the motion before for the truck?
Yeah, there's, there's roughly $3,000 left in the account for the purchase of the truck because we had approved 45 and we spent somewhere in the neighborhood of 42. So I wanted to get the striping package, and then the only other thing I wanted to finish out that, that last money with was a hard cover for the bed area. I wanted to get one of those diamond back covers that locks so that we can store stuff in there without worry of people going in it.
For the cover? Do you have? Do you know how much the cover would cost about or you have no?
Uh, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $2,000. I'm trying, I was in communication with them, trying to get them to give me a deal on it. When I first initially contacted them, they said they could give me a 25% discount, which would come off of it. But I haven't gotten back to them about the actual purchase.
We should probably have a motion. Somebody wants to make a motion for that?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? All right.
All right, thank you. I thank council for their continued support.
All right, Brian, thank you. Justin, did you have anything you want to bring up?
Uh, nothing specifically, no.
Mary, did you have anything? Wesley?
Um, I just, the BBC is meeting with Amelia on Wednesday to discuss her project in the park.
For the Girl Scout?
Yeah.
Jason, did you have anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Michelle? No? How about Gary?
I'm good, thanks, Danny.
Okay. All right, I only really have one thing. John Kessley called me maybe 10 minutes before the meeting. He, he wants to make meetings, but he couldn't make them. I guess Jefferson changed theirs the Tuesday now also, so. What he was wanting to bring to our attention was this fire from the Fire Company, the house on the end, that the alarm from the fire station actually woke the lady up. So he just wanted to pass that one. We're aware of, you know, people complain about it, but it does actually help, you know, and that is the ability. So they are looking at getting a computer thing. He's talking.
Shorten the time of the fire. That's about it. So I don't have a problem with it. I'm sure.
That night for her woke her up. So. And he said that there was something, they want to look at the run cards to change the confined encapment one. They want to just change a couple little things. He says, not many years. This fire, but they want to make sure they have all, everything covered. Although, Justin, he's not even going to talk to you about it too much, but he said he's looking at the change in the run card a little. How they dispatch for that one. He said they didn't have any issue, but they want to make sure they don't. And he also said, what, took them six minutes for the Fire Company, six minutes to get the fire control. On the sewer side, Mr. Rehab was out and he was, they're still currently not done, I guess, with the weather and their work schedule. Had the majority of the things accomplished, but the, the two major ones that we wanted, you know, the biggest leaks are still, I should say they were as of last week, still pending. So I don't know if they got to them, but when we find out, we'll let you know. Claire was working with them. That's pretty much it for me. For me, for you. Brendan needs some motions here. We need a motion for the library board to approve some members. For first one here, Sean, Ralph and Savage. I don't know, we can make it all one motion, I guess, if everybody's all right with that. It'd be Sean, Crystal Lentle, Winrick, sorry. Matthew Whipple, Sarah Jones, and Bob Stoufus.
I will make the motion.
Okay, thanks. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Everybody opposed? Right. Then we need a motion to appoint McCarthy as a general engineer. Somebody wants to make a motion to hire officially. Mary?
I'll second.
All favor? Yes. Everybody opposed? All right. And then we have the next one to appoint Craft Code Service for code zoning in buildings. Somebody wants to make a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Garrett. Thank you. All favor? Everybody opposed? Then we also need the motion to purchase the leaf grinder for costs not to exceed $4,000. If you want.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. We have a second? Show? All right, all favor?
Aye.
Consensus. I had Googled a local dealer and the most local one was Reading Cavota. A Reading Tractor and Equipment. It's the Cavota Place on 61. Beans were state contract because the price everywhere else was $3,900. Beans were state contracted. It was $3,003.
Brendan, you are.
However, I spent another $238 or something to get an electric start for the one. And then we have to get the battery, but it'll, will be, should be under like $3,500, $3,600, so.
Well, and they did say there's, there's some accessories that we might want to consider in the future. So once we get it, we don't worry about that, but he said.
But it is ordered, so.
Okay, then we need a motion for the purchase of the security camera.
Did we already make a motion back when they went out the first time?
We did, but I made it for $1,000. I'm not sure what that one was because of needing the monitors.
I will make the motion. I was just curious.
We did.
We did, but the camera system was 600 and I thought that's what the motion was for.
Got it.
No, monitors will make it a little more. So you made the motion, Wes?
I did.
Do we have a second? Oh, Michelle. All right, all favor?
Aye.
Everybody opposed? Then the next one is to give Blue Marsh Emergency Management Association 47750 for their annual contribution. I guess they're asking for it.
Yeah, I got a letter or request.
So I did join the committee for the Emergency Association. And I'm curious, what is our expectation?
What is council's expectation?
Yes, what, what benefit does the borough directly or indirectly derive from this?
Right. It's just if there's an emergency, they have some type of response team and people come out other than the Fire Company.
I mean, we, we had an emergency declared. We had a pandemic and they didn't do anything, including telling us about a grant that they knew about.
Be falling in that soap, yes. Anybody have any thoughts or any inputs or anything?
Brenda, I'm assuming they sent out a letter asking to be paid?
They did.
Can the borough respond by asking what direct or indirect value it receives by doing it, by being a member?
Basically what they need the money for, eh?
Well, so far, the only thing that I've seen them spend money on was buying T-shirts or polos. I'll say it, you know, and how do I say it? I joined the committee, but you know, I'm just kind of curious. What, you know, what is the true value of it? I know there is, oh crap, Tom dropped off the call. There is the joint emergency. I know there is, oh crap, Tom dropped off the call, there is the joint emergency thing that you're, the booklet that you're required to do every so many years? Uh.
The planning, it's not the planning. Yeah, but it's not added. It's just a new. Yeah, we can have some. We can tell that's all, next meeting, that's not an issue. That's all we'll do if everybody's all right with that. The next one we have is a motion to hire Brown Schultz, Sheridan, and Brits to do the fax collector on. The cost not to exceed thirty-two hundred dollars. I think that's the same as it was last year. Yeah. Need a motion to hire, so they can start.
Well, they won't start till August.
Mary? Thank you. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Good, thank you. All favor? Anybody opposed? Then we just need a consensus to allow the Cub Scouts to use the park. They want to do Findwood Derby April twenty-fourth with a rain date of May first. So if everybody's all right with that, we'll let them know. Okay?
So just a quick question. So I'm, and I'm not opposed to letting the Cub Scouts use it, but I know if one of the churches wanted to use it, we'd charge the churches to rent it.
Right.
So I think if we're going to be consistent, if we're going to charge the churches, which are a nonprofit, we should also be charging the Cub Scouts for renting the park. Or alternatively, we should just allow nonprofits to improve it as long as no one else has it rented. I'm okay with either, but I think we need to be consistent.
But I think you also look at gifts and kind that we receive from the Boy Scouts or the Cub Scouts. So you know, how do I say it? The services and the values that they provide the community by their community action in the park far offsets the cost of rental.
That's true.
I agree, and the other issue we had is when we had the the churches there, it was like three hundred people, yeah, it just like, oh, it was, it was a lot. So that was the reason it was before.
Like, I have no problem using it for free.
Yeah. Findwood Derby, I'm sure will be a lot of people at that, I would imagine. Just their pack. No, okay. Everybody's all right with that? We'll let them know.
And the other thing is they want to use the park for their Cub Scout meeting when it starts getting nice out in April. Uh, and then use it for the summer, like they did one, I think they did one night a month. I think it was a Monday night or Tuesday, like, uh, would it be okay if they, if there's a consensus for them to use that, that I would give Jeremy looks the key again so he can lock and unlock the bathroom?
And keep it.
Well, he turns it in at the end of the season.
I'm saying keep it nice.
Oh, yeah.
Which I'm sure he will.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Is everybody all right with that? Okay. All right, then we just, we're going to move on to the meeting minutes as of January. If there's any questions or anything, we can go on. If I have any question?
I have a question.
Your?
Um, the library was wondering, because you were talking about using the park, um, with, um, our summer reading program, we were wondering if we could use the park to do some of our programming down there, um, based on the fact that we can't have as that many people in here. I'm not sure exactly what days it would be, it would be, all of it, I think, would be during the day. So that we could social distance.
So would it be in the week or on weekends?
It would be during the week.
Yeah.
We used to have them on Mondays, but we haven't yet decided exactly what we're doing and how we're doing it yet. But I told Debbie that I would ask you guys tonight to, you know, at least start considering it.
Right. Yeah, I would say, I mean, if you do, and you could give us some type of schedule, just so we can let people know. You know, kind of mowing grass, you don't want them down there mowing grass, or, you know, when you're down there or whatever. So if everybody is all right with that, or anybody have any question?
You know, in general, I wonder if, um, when people, the point of charging for the park was part of that to cover the expense of cleaning up and getting rid of trash and stuff like that?
Right.
So I mean, I'm all about doing it for free, especially with COVID going on and everything, but should there be some kind of unofficial contract, or at least some kind of fact sheet, like, hey, can you make sure X, Y, and Z are done at the end of every event or every meeting? Because the derby, I'm sure there's going to be trash, there's going to be things laying around, and I'm sure the scouts will clean it up, but.
All right, whatever you should say consistently across the board.
Yeah.
Everybody, if we're going to do that. I don't know, I think that's a great idea. I mean, if everybody else is all right with it. Put something together and let you look over it if you want to add, or. If you have thoughts, you want to tell Brenda, you know, what you think should be in.
Yeah. I can look at some other parks and just rip off and duplicate what they did.
Sounds good. All right. Back to the meeting minutes, if we're done with that. We have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Good. We have a second?
I'll second it.
All favor? Anybody opposed? Then we have the profit and loss. Mistake. Okay. All right, we're going to do the if anybody has any questions or we need a motion to pay the bills. Motion? Okay. That's, you second it, Wesley? Okay. All favor? Anybody opposed? All right, then we'll go to the treasurer's report, as of January thirty-first. If we can have a motion to accept that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, all favor? Anybody opposed? Now we get to the profit and loss. We have a motion to accept that, or if there's any questions or anything?
I'll make the motion.
You have a second? All favor?
Hi.
I gave everybody the countless things. I didn't receive any engineer reports or code reports. I guess it's early. Uh, they did issue an electrical permit, this is Craft Co's, to two twenty-three main, and then they issued the plumbing permit for the water connection at one fifty End Street. Uh, they were told years ago that they had to hook up to the public water, and the person who lived there is deceased now, and somebody bought it to fix it and flip it. And I told them, look, it needs to be connected to water. So they did pay the four thousand dollar cap and fee, and they got their permit, they actually have settlement at the end of the week. So, but they're good to go, Craft will inspect everything, so. But I didn't actually receive a report from Craft. Um, so I gave you all the account listings and then select environments reports. And that's all I have because I put everything on the agenda as motions that he would ask. I don't have anything else. Unless you have questions for me.
All right. The only thing I have, like, just to keep in mind is with the leaf blower, we'll have to have some kind of box on the back of the truck, so it just doesn't go everywhere when you blow it in. I'm sure we can either make one, or maybe you can purchase one at a reasonable price, but you can't just blow it on a truck, it'll just go everywhere in little pieces. It's something to keep in mind, we'll have to look at that. I think that was it.
Um, Sean? How do we go into executive session?
Um, I can end this call, and then we can enter into executive session by using.
The executive session is a whole state.
Just about acquiring or not acquiring? Okay?
Okay. So, yeah, everyone, we just need to leave the call and then join the executive session. I'll start that now.